I think that was muted.
I think it was. I tried not to point fingers, but I think it was. Alright, we got it straightened out now, we're good.
Lots more people out there, indeed.
Hey Doug.
How are you, sir?
Good.
Thank for your note today.
No, well, it was a good meeting. As I mentioned going into it, didn't know, but you know, it's got a history because they just got one thing. But I got two pages of one things. Yeah, I passed it on to my folks at Rapids and I got a quite a list back from Brad. Things that they're already doing that I didn't know about.
Move back up here, I hope that's okay. There, Dick.
I just tried, I just tried calling him back.
Pardon?
I just tried calling him back.
Yeah, I did. Please sit down.
Oh, that worked out.
Pardon?
Hey, Amy.
Hey, Amy. Hey, how's it going? Hey, how's it going, Amy, how's it going? Hey, Dick.
How's everybody?
Hey Kelly. Hey Kelly, before we start, I just want to tell you the non-part works awesome. Appreciate the team working that I picked up.
Yeah, good job, Kelly.
She's ignoring us.
She's got us muted.
Yes, he is.
Sorry, guys, thank you. Got hung up on her second, but yeah, it seems together nicely. All the sensing companies, D and M was able to get in there and do it quickly for us and stuff. Was that long?
Yeah, I got feedback from a lot of other factories, like the factory was put together and operated and so.
Yeah, yeah, honestly, they've been really good. And they're, they did a couple of projects for us and then we have this all time and lots to do to fix a couple of those. But they've done super quick. And I think it's mainly because of more of the commercial side. Explain what?
Is it officially open back to the public again or is it closed?
See, I think everything is officially back.
Nice, nice.
Alright, we can get started. Hiawatha Council Meeting, regular meeting, November 18th, 2020. Roll call, please.
Jerry Moinkel.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Amy Wickendall.
Sorry, I can't hardly hear you, but I'm here.
Rob Archibald.
Here.
Steve Dodson.
Here.
Perfect, we're all here. Approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, great. Citizens input, is there anybody in the audience that would like to approach the mic? As far as anything that's not on the agenda, welcome to come up. I don't think we got any citizens in here, so we're gonna move, keep on moving. Reports from city council members, myself, Kim. You can go, you get to go first.
I have a couple things real quick.
Angus.
Let's go ahead.
Can I briefly, I did sit in on the Parks and Parks meeting last week. A lot of it was discussions on potential programming for activities for 21. But although of course COVID still kind of lingers over it. We got the one item on the agenda tonight with the ice skating and it sounds like for one last activity for the year is making a rain gear one a virtual event this year instead of, you know, the, you know, in person that they've done previously. Kind of second thing, I did sit in on Senator Mathis's kind of video call with the local health officials. I mean, a lot of it was kind of information we already know. The thing that kind of stood out to me the most on this was how most kind of transmission of the COVID-19 virus is still being transmitted primarily in small group gatherings and, you know, kind of events like that, even though, because they say that there's not really any large events that they can really trace this back to. It all seems to be in tighter, tighter gatherings right against, so.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
I have a report from the water work meeting yesterday.
Okay.
Any ground storms? Pipe work has been completed by a tank. They did a pressure test and a material test. They were passing the flying colors. And Schrader excavated just eight in the following week, the back tilt and the landscape. Also, within the next week, worked for the booster pump station to gather the pipe work. Foundation work for the booster pump and meter B to build it. And the pipe work and everything completed by year ten. And the remaining work will be completed by June 21st. Also got tailing parts installed at 29th and 5th story road, sideline round storage tank. That's also part of the fire control project. So, that's all I had.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, um, I got a couple things. For one, I want to thank everybody that reached out to me with the passing of my mother. It was on, obviously, on the election day and sad day, but I think she's better off, she's with my father now, so. But just a special thanks for everybody that reached out, it was nice, very nice, very touching. Hopefully, we got that stuff over now, Kim.
Let's hope so.
I'm sorry, I'm being loud.
Yep, well, you were busy yourself, Steve, so you're, you're excused. Yep. Well, we'll stop that.
For real.
She sounded like a fantastic lady, the obituary.
Yep, she did, she was, she was a good mother.
I attended, and Kim got in part of it, but the Economic Alliance with Headco and Medco, they had a Zoom meeting with some of the, few of the industrial heads. And the discussion was best practices for dealing with the, what we're dealing with right now in Sabox. And I shared with Doug afterward, note, didn't know what to expect when I, you know, was gonna sit in on the meeting. And, but the premise that I live by is if you don't attend, they may say the one thing that's gonna change your life, so you better show up, so. Anyway, it turned out to be a very good meeting. I took my random notes and I passed it on to staff today, our management staff at Rapids and found out also that they had some additional ideas of things that they're doing. But it was a very good meeting. It brought to light what other people are going to contend with the virus and how the staffing goes and, you know, as far as, it was interesting, some of the rotations they were, were working with. So, just, I don't know if you have that recorded, but it's, if somebody had a chance, that would be a good meeting.
It was a very active approach and I certainly commend, we really initiated through Senator Mathis and reaching out to our economic development corporations, including us in that plan, in that planning set and how do, how do we, how do we address this and how do we get it out to the individuals throughout our Lynn County metro area? And it really did, it honestly, this really came together in a couple of days. And they, I was impressed by the individuals that participated from the companies and just their, their, as an employer, just to be able to see how they care about their employees and the things that they put into place. And didn't even think twice about doing it and just very impressive and doing the work that they need to do and certainly still navigating through that. Some of them talked about those things that maybe they would keep in existence even after, you know, even after COVID. And what are those things that they know they just simply will not do? And accommodating, account, accommodating their individuals as well and, you know, and really learning about their employees. Those that work well at home, those that don't work well at home, some of those that kind of need that diversity between working from home and coming in. So just really accommodating people to get the work done that they need. We actually had Punkish from Channel Fusion represent Hiawatha. And he just talked about, you know, 20, and all of, and everyone talked about this, that 2020 was gonna be their big, the biggest year yet. Every one of those individuals talked about 2020 being their biggest year yet. And Punkish said 2020 is still gonna be a big year for them. He said 21 may be a little different story and I think everybody was probably on the same page with that as well. But just, just a tremendous job in, in what they were doing and the representation that was there to let people know that this can be done. And yeah, sometimes you have to tuck in your knee a little bit to figure it out, but you brush it, brush it off and get up and you figure it out. It's a very, very impressive group of people.
Yeah, I echo those comments, Doug. You guys did a really, really great job. What impressed me listening to it was that all the speakers struck me as being very proactive in this situation rather than reactive. They were a little bit ahead of, ahead of the curve anticipating what seemed to be the worst case scenario. So, it was very, very interesting to listen to. It was good. Mark, I should have mentioned, Mark was there representing Headco. I'm looking right at Kim, so. But, no, Mark spoke this morning too.
Yeah, I thought it was an out, I told Doug this and others, I thought it was an outstanding, I think it was a week ago tomorrow, we had the meeting to try to get it set up, so I mean, it happened in a matter of days. And, and I agree with what Dick said about how these folks, these business leaders were ahead of the curve, but also not only ahead of the curve, but thinking outside the box. I mean, not just thinking, okay, what's the minimum thing we can do? And what struck me was, we're doing this because we want to protect our, our employees and our staff, because without them, we can't do what we need to do, so. Doug did an outstanding job hosting, asking the questions and moving them along, and I thought the responses from the panel were superb. I mean, I, I've been on these things before where you have a couple of months to plan them and they're not as good as this one. This was really good.
Awesome, that's good to hear because, you know, some of the businesses that I've went out and reached out to, 20, 20 is gonna be biggest year on record. With all the disruption, it's just awesome to hear that, so.
One last comment I'd like to make is, I don't recall who brought it up, Doug, but the whole mental health issue.
Right.
That really, really cannot be overlooked and we're addressing it at my company too and it's a serious issue.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Definitely.
Yep, I just have a couple other things to add, Mayor, and that is just to let you know, the library project in Phase Two is moving along. We still have a completion date of next week, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. We, it doesn't, we will still have punch list items that we'll be, that we'll be working through, but we will definitely for sure be able to move forward and be completed with all those punch list items hopefully by the middle of December, so we'll, we'll, I asked Garland if they could put a great big red bow on the front of the door to represent a Christmas present to the rest of us. This would be nice to get that done. And then just a little update on Dratcho as well. We have, we have Rachi in here completing the removal of the shredding that we had at the different sites. The last ones were on our Ahern property and then just north of that on Mayor Bennett's property there and then out on Stamy Road where we have, where we're planning to build a fire station. They are supposed to be completed by Friday, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. They were really put a dent on the Ahern property, so it was good to see that hopefully be done. Then our next segment of Dratcho would, will be the removal of our stumps. And then certainly all the debris that is at Oak Brook that needs to be completed. We still have quite a bit, people continue to bring more to the curb and so we are, we'll be picking the rest of that up. I do think that we'll probably need to send out another postcard, although we said we weren't picking anymore up, they're still putting stuff to the curb. So we'll have to, we did press releases and newsletter articles, but I think we're gonna have to put a, we're gonna have to put something in everybody's mailboxes.
Might also reach out to somebody that would do that for them, so they, you know, maybe find them some options. When we send out that list.
Yeah.
That'd be, you know, I mean, just saying, because.
Yes, I think the contract, they're hiring contractors and they're just putting it to the curb.
Right.
So contractors now need to haul it away versus us picking it up, so I think we'll have to send out a postcard early next week and get that out there.
Okay.
Oh, and I do have, John Bender is, I, we just put a little.
Officially retired.
Yes, officially, John, are you?
John, you with us?
Hear him now.
Yep, there he is.
Hey, thanks, Kim.
You're welcome.
Wanted to be there with you this week, which is my last official week, but we're all kind of scattered over it appears. And it's just going to go forward, but I hear a little bit of a rumor that Kim was gonna put on that X for you, just put the pot together. But it's been a great eight-year venture, what a great drive, we got a lot of things done, so. I really appreciate the support and everything we got done and it was a lot of fun. And I just wish I could be there this week, so that we could all kind of celebrate, but maybe we'll do that later. You can invite me back for some, maybe some cool ribbon cutting someday.
There we go. Well, as far as.
We got a great team, we got a great team and there's a lot of them on the call tonight, I don't think you're gonna find a better team than the staff members you got, so. But Kim's leading, you're in great shape.
Well, I sure appreciate the five years that I was with you, John, it was, it was very enlightening on what we got going in Hiawatha and it was a pleasure working with you.
Congratulations, John, you're a great member.
Definitely, John. John, that sounds like a plan, so keep up the good work, everything's in good shape and I appreciate the effort that everybody put together and it was great.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John, yeah, thanks. Okay, let's move on to business. Presentation by outside agencies for funding requests, dates. Cedar Rapids Metro Alliance, presentation by Doug Newman, and here's Doug.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'll try to speak loud and if I'm too muffled, let me know, but I'll try to do it with the mask on. In a normal year, this is the time when I come before you and I show you what we plan to do in 2020 in terms of synchronous visits and business outreach and capital investment and jobs and Hiawatha Business Summit participation and all the things that we partner on and kind of the goals that we have. This has not been a normal year, if you haven't noticed, so. I come to you tonight with a little bit different report than, than we have in, in the standard year. We ceremoniously ripped up our strategic action plan in April or May on a Zoom meeting and just said, this doesn't matter anymore, we've gotta completely pivot what we're doing. And in many ways, I, you know, I think we provided more value than ever to businesses and I certainly am proud of the year that we had, even if it wasn't the year that we planned to have. You know, other things that we did, the immediate outreach to small businesses to try to point them to some of the small business grant assistance that came, particularly from the state government, but later from SBA. When you look at some of those statistics, Lynn County on a per capita basis and this metro area on a per capita basis got more grant and grant assistance, funding assistance than almost any other place in the state. I think at least part of that is because we promoted the heck up and made sure that everybody knew that it was available. And for small businesses that didn't handle it at all, that were kind of overwhelmed by the moment or didn't know how to start a grant application, we actually turned a couple of our people, Mike Lutkin and Laura Thomas into grant writers. I think we had, we touched something like 43 of those grants and, you know, not something we normally do, but just one example of the pivots that we made. I came to council a couple of months ago and talked to you guys about RallyCal, another example of something that we didn't imagine, but we wanted to try to generate more assistance, more energy around the bi-local notion and the fact that our individual spending decisions could really have an impact on small businesses right now. We've got to be intentional about our spending and think about bi-local, so. Couple of examples of, of the kind of pivots that we made this year. We did still do a lot of traditional work, synchronous visits went on like they always do on a little different cycle. The utilities came to us right after the Dratcho and said, we really need to check in on businesses. And they gave us a pretty impossible task, I think they wanted us to do like 60 visits in 60 days or something. And we got a lot of those done, paused cycle. We'll be right back on cycle now, so we'll have some, some visits coming up here in the first and second quarters like we always do, but on, on balance, we had more synchronous visits than we ever do in a year because the Adon Alliance asked us to kind of do an extra round of those to just check in on how everybody was doing. The discussion before this presentation already touched on some of the things I was gonna touch on. When you think about the economy and the forecast, it hasn't been all bad this year. We certainly lost some projects, there's been some companies that put some things on pause. And I think by the time we get done looking at business intelligence, what I would surmise is that if you had a project that was almost started, was basically ready to go, you went ahead with it anyway. If you had a project that was maybe two or three years down the road, you also continue to go ahead with it. Our business attraction pipeline right now has about the same number of prospects as a typical year, because I think business leads, some of those on the call today, when they, they look ahead two or three years and they know that we're gonna rebound, they know there's gonna be recovery. Now, if you had a project that you were planning for first and second quarter of 2021, you're, you're probably on pause, right? So the beginning of the pipeline was fine, the middle of the pipeline was bad, the back of the pipeline was okay and I'm very optimistic still about, about the future. I tend to try and give not only the good news, but the bad news. Our total labor force, total employment in the NSA right now is down about 15,000 jobs from where we were a year ago. We've erased 10 years of slow steady growth that we put so much effort into. We talked about workforce attraction, workforce development, workforce retention, workforce, workforce, workforce. And we had made progress on that over, over the last 10 years and it really all got wiped out in the course of a couple of months. Some of that I think will rebound. You think about people that maybe have childcare situations or online schooling situations right now where they're like, I've gotta step back from the world because I've gotta take care of kids at home. I do worry a little bit about, I think one of the other, anecdotally, one of the things we know that's going on is if you were planning to retire in a year or two, you just said, this isn't worth it, I mean, it's just crazy right now, I'm good, I'm gonna, I'm gonna retire now. I'm gonna join John Bender over here campaigning and then not try to hold out until 2021 or 2022. So, some of that I think is gonna be slower, slower to come back, so there are certainly concerning signs, but there's a lot of signs about them as well. We had Hiawatha, Hiawatha specifically, we are working with an existing business that's still planning expansion project, but put it on a little bit of a pause. Like, you know, wanna be careful, so that was kind of one of those in the middle, I still expect that that's gonna go ahead at some point. One other really interesting project that I'll touch on just for a couple of seconds, but this is very unusual. And how do you accomplish that in this, in this era of remote workers? But in the, in light of the Go Daddy layoff announcements, knowing that we're gonna lose a bunch of jobs, another internet provider came to us and came to the market and said, we'll hire all those people. We need those exact same people and most of those people have been hyped. There's a lot of that for those jobs, they did lose their jobs. They're not building a building there, it's not a traditional economic development project. They're not looking for square footage at this point. People are sitting at home, but they're employed, they're still living in Hiawatha or somewhere in the region, they still have a job. Again, it's been a really unusual year and counting this stuff happens a little bit differently than it did. We already mentioned the Headco partnerships, that was wonderful program this morning and just, you know, one example of the kind of stuff that we do specifically. Wanted to mention just one more thing. The, yeah, a lot more to come, a lot of discussions on this, but the Economic Alliance has in its 2021 plan, certainly we want to play a role and perhaps a lead role, if all of you think that's appropriate, in working on the extension of the sales tax. I know Ron's been here and has talked to you in some circles already, but I do mention that again, is the value that an Economic Alliance can provide. You're somewhat limited as city government about campaigning and what you can do for advocacy. We can be unabashed advocates for the extension of the sales tax and, and try to work that campaign, so. Well, obviously, there's a lot of steps, we're the infancy of that, but that'll be a big 2021 priority and something that we can talk to you about, so. I could go on a lot longer, I won't. There's, there's a lot of stuff always to talk about as, as your earlier discussion indicated. I really, really appreciate this relationship and all the connections I have with council and especially with Kim. I appreciate the step up that you guys did last year, which gives Kim access to even, to a different circle into that Irish Investor Council. And we would respectfully request the same level funding as we did last year. We have no intention at this point of raising those at all, so we hope to continue the partnership for another year and would respectfully ask for your support of that.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Doug, thank you for your presentation.
Personally, might be the easiest yes decision that I would ever make today.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, well, I'd ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Moinkel.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. Number seven, public hearing.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, Doug, have a good evening. Number seven, public hearing, consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance Chapter 101 Stormwater Detention System 101.03 rates by increasing the monthly rates of commercial, industrial and residential properties. And we're open to public hearing at 5:56. Did we receive any letters?
No.
Okay. Anybody would like to speak in behalf? If not, we're gonna close the public hearing at 5:57. Hey, consider first reading.
So moved.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Roll call.
Jerry Moinkel.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Okay. Number eight, public hearing to consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance Chapter...
Phil, you need to do B and C.
Oh, I'm sorry. Back up. Number seven, ask for a, ask for motion, waving second and third reading.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and consider adoption.
So moved. Second.
Roll call again.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Okay, number eight, public hearing to consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance Chapter 21, City Administrator to reflect the position's title change from City Administrator to City Manager and update language throughout the chapter. And we'll open up the public hearing at 5:58. Anybody like to speak in behalf? Any letters, Carrie?
No.
Okay. Close the hearing at 5:58. A, consider first reading.
So moved.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I can interject here.
Yes, you can.
So just so everybody knows how this all came about, you know, the council decided that they wanted to change the City Administrator to City Manager position. We had a committee. It was Dick and Rob, myself, and Carrie initially, and then ultimately we got Kim involved as well. This probably took longer than it maybe necessarily should have, but I think the reason it did was because we wanted to make sure that it was right and make sure that it was consistent with the remaining portions of the city code. And so what you have in front of you is the Chapter 21 showing the red line changes that we've proposed or that the committee had come up with and thought that this would make the most sense for the city. I'm looking at the draft, Kim, that you gave me, and I think, I think there's still one, one change. If you go to the second page of the resolution, which would be under 2104 subsection four, I think, Dick, can you help me out? Were we going to strike with approval of the council on the administrative assistant appointments?
Yes. Actually, you came up with some language.
I think it should be and may appoint administrative assistants that shall be needed by.
Yes.
So if you strike the words, well, get rid of the comma, comma with approval of the council, comma, I think that should be removed.
Did you guys all hear that?
I think most of it. I generally don't have an issue with it.
I'm kind of good with it. I agree. It is longer than it should have. It seems like it took a lot of effort, but yeah, we wanted to make sure we did it right. The other thing is I think we need to make sure that we update all of the other ordinance in the reference to the administrator. For example, I just looked at Chapter 17 today and that references city managers. So make sure we get those things squared away.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep. Okay, so we had a first and a second, and we're going to start roll call? Is that where we're at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Bill, just a quick thing. For this and also Chapter 15, can we all get a clean copy? A final clean copy?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, B, wave second and third reading.
So moved.
Say?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And C, consider adoption.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Okay, number nine, consider resolution setting public hearing December 2nd, 2020, 5:30 PM to consider amending Hiawatha Code of Ordinance Chapter 15, Mayor, Section 15.03 Appointments by deleting 10 Deputy Chiefs.
Mark, can we address this too?
Sure, sure. As part of our due diligence to revise Chapter 21 to move City Administrator to City Manager, as you all know, and Rob pointed out tonight, these different chapters intertwine with one another. And so the one that we looked at immediately was Chapter 15, which is the duties and powers of the mayor. And so as we were going through this, we were coming across, you know, what are the mayor appointments? And you can see them listed under 5103. We got the deputy chiefs, and we think it makes sense to delete that because my understanding of deputy chiefs are appointed by?
Chief.
The chief. And so, which kind of makes sense as far as an organizational chart. So that's, that's why this is, this would come back to council, setting the public hearing, come back to council to delete that. And then, you know, there's going to be other, there's going to be other city code sections that we're going to have to modify that say City Administrator, this should be City Manager. So those will be coming back in the near future as well.
In addition, Mark, and I haven't seen the revision since our email exchange today. In terms of the heading for 15.03, we're going to avoid any ambiguity. We're going to change that to the mayor shall appoint and dismiss the following official subject to the consent of a council.
Yeah, well, yeah, good, good point, Dick. And see, what happens, well, here's what I've seen in these codes. They all say shall appoint, but none of them seem to say shall appoint or terminate or whatever it may be. I think the inference is if you have the ability to appoint, you have the ability to terminate. And so there again, it still would have to be with approval of the council. So Dick had circulated, I think, was it early this afternoon, some additional revisions to try to clean that up. So when this comes back to you in December, it'll reflect those changes as well.
And including the dismiss, that's important in that it's consistent with the 372.4 chapter.
Right.
Which does state appoint and dismiss. So I think it's, it's important that it's understood that in this case, Bill has that authority to appoint and dismiss. And Kim has the authority for the department heads for appointing and dismissing. Clears up any kind of conflict between Chapters 15 and 21.
And the City Administrator, City Manager still supervises all of the department heads. So that does not change.
All of your director reports.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. And I've had this come up before. I've had people ask, say, well, it only says appoint. It doesn't talk about dismiss. But as you know, it says Code of Iowa, Section 372.4. And Dick, right, it does say dismiss. So in those cases, I, my legal opinion is, well, let's go back to the Iowa code, see what it says. It says if you have the power to appoint, you certainly have the power to dismiss. But I think what Dick is proposing, let's go ahead and state it in the code so there's no ambiguity.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'd ask for a motion and a second. Do we have those?
So.
Did we? No?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Yay.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Yay.
Amy Wickendall.
I'm sorry. Please turn my daylight in here.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
All right, moving on to number 10. Purchase sale of development agreement with Hub, H U B LLC. A, consider resolution, one, approving minimum development requirements, criteria or competitive criteria and purchasing and dis... Distribution of criteria property located within the Hiawatha urban renewal area. Two, determine the proposal submitted by the Hub LLC. Yeah, satisfies the offer requirements and declaring the intern of the city and enter into a purchase sale and development agreement by and between the City of Hiawatha, Iowa, and Hub LLC in the event that no competitive proposals are submitted. And three, soliciting competitive proposals. Everybody get all that? I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Got it. We're all over the place.
Roll call.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
And B, consider resolution fixing date for public hearing January 6th, 2021, 5:30 PM on the proposal to enter into a purchase sale and development agreement with the Hub LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Amy Wickendall. Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Okay, number 11, consider resolution rescinding Resolution 20-195 and 20-204 requesting reimbursement for the Iowa COVID-19 governmental relief fund and requesting collecting reimbursements from the Iowa COVID-19 Government Relief Fund. Got that?
Got it.
Need a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
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 Roll call.
Three seconds.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 12, consider resolution approving contract amendment, number three, to the professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates for the Tower Terrace Road reconstruction from I-380 to North Center Point Road Project Rise Grant Application.
So moved.
Is this for the new, is this for the new grant application?
Yeah, for the...
Yeah, it's still for our area with the inner, with the Tower Terrace interchange.
For the rise grant.
Yep.
Right. Did you get that, Rob?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Okay, number 13, consider resolution approving a professional services agreement with Shive Hadry for North 12th Avenue and Boyson Road traffic study.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Number 14, consider resolution approving remodeling a portion of the fire department to add dorm rooms.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Okay, number 15, consider resolution approving the purchase of seven sets of firefighter turnout protective gear.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Number 16, consider resolution approving the Parks Department ice rink purchase.
So moved. What a great idea.
Yeah, we should have done that.
When I read that, I thought, you know, I've been here a few years. Why didn't we do that earlier?
Remember when Matt Riss used to do it in his yard? Yeah, a little bit smaller deal, but yeah. Okay, we got a first and a second? Did you hear a second? Got it? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Rob Archibald. Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Number 17, consider resolution amending City of Hiawatha's purchasing policies and procedures, adding federal requirements Exhibit B.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Number 18, consider resolution adopting a city of Hiawatha fraud policy and procedures.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Just, Mayor Bennett, just, I just want to point out, we did make one small change and it's, it's real simple. I noticed in Section 4, I had Mark Parmenter take a look at it as well. We kind of doubled up in who to respond to or who to report to in 4 and 5. So I just, in 4 referring to number 5, which is then lays out who to, who to report to.
Okay. Okay, we were...
Roll call.
We're at roll call, yeah. Thank you.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Okay, number 19, consider resolution adopting a city of Hiawatha personal identification or identity identification policy.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Jerry Mowinkle.
Aye.
Amy Wickendall.
Aye.
Rob Archibald.
Aye.
Steve Dodson.
Aye.
Dick Olson.
Aye.
And number 20, discussion possible action COVID-19 update. Kim?
Yes. Just wanted to give you an update. I know I had emailed you earlier, earlier in the week. We have engaged going back to Phase 1. If you remember, we put policy together, kind of laying things out for Phase 1, Phase 2, Phase 3. We were in the midst of Phase 2, really didn't get all, all the way into Phase 3. And with the increased cases that we have and the burden that it is putting on our hospitals and all, our healthcare field in general, it, we really felt that it was important for us to go back to Phase 1. There were many phone, phone calls and many virtual conferences last week with Lynn County Public Health, along with our Senator Mathis as well. And as you know, we've been working at our own mass campaign and putting things in place and really trying to just strike... and really trying to just strike that awareness and keep it moving. And so with that, with that said, last week, Lynn County Public Health had decided that they wanted to move forward with a mask mandate. They did, in fact, do that this week, they did have Lynn County, or, yeah, Lynn County supervisors as well. So both their public health board and the supervisors have, have also put that mask mandate in place, along with, as we know, Governor Reynolds as well this week. So with that, with that being said, I want to just confirm and reaffirm that with Lynn County Public Health putting their mask mandate in place and some of their criteria does cover our metro communities, including Hiawatha. So we have a couple of different things happening with the state of Iowa and then here with our Lynn County Public Health. We are, as I said, it's very appropriate then for us to have moved into the phase that we did, which started on Monday. This phase for our city employees is very, very similar, with just a little bit of a difference because of the fact that we're still cleaning up with DeRico, that we are, we are not splitting up our shifts. So back in the spring, we had Public Works and Water, that an A team and a B team, for example. So A team came in on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then they shifted. With the work that we have in our, on our laps right now, it really, we really can't do it quite that way. So they're really just splitting up the shifts as how they come in. And then certainly over time, some will, you know, some will come in much earlier and then some, and then they'll, and then the second group will stay later. It really just kind of depends on how well we work through DeRico and getting all of that together. I did go up to the shop today and just reiterated the, the mask, washing their hands, paying attention to their physical distance between one another. Remind, you know, we've split up break times and lunch times, even, even locations for lunch. Those that, here in the administrative offices, those that can work from home or working from home, we do still have people coming into, into City Hall, meeting staff coming into City Hall, but we're just rotating that as well, just trying to really keep that, keep that contact reduced as much as we can, that we physically and responsibly and fiscally responsibly can. So very similar, but just a little bit different caveat in how we're moving forward just because of the additional work that we have with DeRico. Any questions in regards to that?
No, I think we did a great job, and Mark, and we have to step back and do it again.
Yep.
That's the way I look at it.
Yep, yep.
In terms of the council meetings, we just plan to continue doing what we're doing, have the flexibility if you want to do it online versus coming in.
Yes, that is something that I wanted to discuss with you and what you're comfortable in doing. You know, I certainly don't want to put anyone in risk. The other thing that I, with the mask mandate and the policy that they, that they have in place, Lynn County Public Health has in place with your, with contact tracing and with masks, with the changes that they've made, they've become much more strict with that. So as an example of, for whatever reason, we're not able to maintain that six-foot distance even with masks, if, if someone in that group, over 15 minutes within a 24-hour period, if someone in that group was positive, that then would take everybody that was in that group out. And so I want to be very cognizant and I want to be really responsible with that because the last thing, I, I don't want to get us in a position that we don't have a quorum. So I want to just be really smart about that.
And that 15 minutes, that, I think some people skip over that, I didn't talk to him for 15 minutes. But if you see him again three or four times, say it, it's a cumulative 15 minutes.
Exactly. Yep. Yep.
Well, I think in terms of where we're at tonight, me personally, I'm comfortable with this limited number of people at the diocese. You guys are a little bit closer than we are. I may be less comfortable if we would have everybody up here. I honestly would be disinclined to be here. So what we're saying is it's going to be up to individual judgment.
Yes, we'll want to be cognizant of that, so if, you know, it may get to the point where we may just say, okay, two of you can come in, two of you have to, you know, two or three stay out.
That's, that's really the point I was getting to, Kim, but I, I mean, obviously, I don't want to say, hey, these two can't come in and these three can, kind of thing.
So maybe that's something we could do the Monday before and get a, get a count.
That's a good idea.
Because people's schedules change.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, and I, second question in regards to that, so we have our CIP discussion Monday night at 6 o'clock. We have talked about the possibility of being in the community center so that we can, because I feel like the multipurpose room is too small for everybody. Unless every, if everybody's okay with doing it virtually and, and doing it online, reviewing online versus coming in, we can certainly accommodate that as well. But if everyone would be comfortable in the community center and providing that space, still wearing our, our masks and be very, be very cognizant of what we're doing and how we're interacting, I think we could accommodate that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. First of all, I, I'd just like to say, I think the CIP obviously is very critical.
Absolutely.
And I think it just makes more sense doing that in person. And the community center does obviously offer that opportunity for us to be really widely dispersed, but yet still be able to communicate.
I would like to see it be done virtually, and I think that if we're going to do it virtual, it needs to be everybody virtual because this is a great example, I have no idea what Dick just said.
I, I second what Rob said, because I can, I can hear Bill and I can hear Mark and Doug, but I'm getting maybe half of what Kim is saying and I can barely hear both Dick and Jerry. Um, and I mean, in terms of going, I think if we do council meeting virtually, which I'm all for, as an example, I don't know, I'm just curious, is it necessary to do this in the council chambers? Because there seems to be some audio balancing issues, which makes it much harder for this to work virtually as opposed to just everybody being on a laptop or a phone in their office or wherever the place may be.
I'm sorry, Amy, I guess I- Go ahead.
I know what you're saying, it's a good example, we said, I mean, because even though you're in a community center, you have a space now where it's still shared with the same HVAC and there's airflow and I, I just think it's a good, best thing to do to set the example for the community.
Let's make a comment, when we were virtual before, I too had, I have hearing aids anyway. When I was tested, it's women's voices that I couldn't hear. My wife at the time said that was selective hearing, but, anyway. But I think, you know, I could turn up the volume on my computer to probably blasting and it picked everybody up. So I think there's adjustments that could be made. Also, I think the microphones on the computers came across pretty good. People sitting here in council, that was the problem. You know, you weren't at a computer per se, were you? Kim?
No, no, no.
Yeah, so maybe if you were sitting in front of your laptop or computer, your microphone would, you know, pick up your voice better. Just my thoughts.
Because I will say, I will say, when I had the Parker Rec meeting the other night, that was all done over the same Google Hangout, but everybody was at their home in front of the laptop computer and I had no problem with any audio issues.
Yeah.
It's just something with the way the microphones are set up. It depends on your proximity to, I think, some of the central laptops that are recording this and how well I'm getting, like, audio because I can hear Bill and others just hear me.
Bill's right in front of the speaker.
Yeah, I moved right over in front of the speaker to just for that purpose. But my comment is, you know, I've been doing Zoom meetings with NPO and others, and NPO just gets frustrating because somebody's computer is cutting in and out. I don't know if they're, they're-
Internet.
Internet or whatever, and it just gets so frustrating because you want to hear what their comments are, but you just, you don't get it.
Yeah.
And sad to say, it was Mr. Olson that was struggling at the last NPO meeting. I don't know what it was, what about, you know, his residence, but his internet was cutting in and out and it was, it was frustrating, so.
Steve, do you, Steve, you have-
It's not optimal, but hey. Maybe if we just do it, so do it through December and then reevaluate the two meetings, talk GIP.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think I can agree with that, just reevaluate what's left and just do this for the year because I only know that the spread is getting bad now, but it may have been, it could have come down a little bit after the new year. And just reevaluate it from there. I mean, to be honest, I would prefer to be in the council chambers to do this. Like I said, this isn't optimal, but it is, it is a reflection of where we're at. And I think, you know, you should, you should set that example.
Well, if, if we go virtual, and I'm good with that, do we simply do a sound check before we start the meeting? And if somebody's not being heard or picked up, we can make adjustments at that time?
Yeah, we can.
Well, I was, I was wondering also too, I mean, if, if your home setup isn't great, what about having a, because we have, do you have some space within City Hall, both, you know, in terms of offices? If someone wanted to bring their laptop or phone down there, connect to Wi-Fi, maybe that helps it too if the home isn't? You know, I'm sure there's some way to arrange that maybe, but I don't know, I have to leave that to Kim Pan or to the coordinator.
Steve, do you have some thoughts?
I don't think- Steve, did you hear any, or did you hear Kim? She wants to know if you had some thoughts.
Oh, I, I kind of concur with Amy and Laura, maybe our next two meetings in December, do a patrol and then red sets, reevaluate March or January, I mean, our first January meeting. I know, I, I get most of, everything Bill says, half the dick, I can hear Amy and Laura really great and Carrie, what she does, the roll call, I have to really listen and rule out the ones that I can hear. She cuts out, number of all, the rest of the activity. So, and now I'm going to have what Kim said, so. Yeah, I think maybe March will, then January, probably either a meeting, then a email hour or anything like that. Maybe we can get that together in the chamber, but I think we have to be on side.
Okay, it sounds to me like we got most of us wanting to be virtual, and I, I agree. And let's, let's finish out the year virtual, do CIP in the last two meetings, and then we'll see what 2021 does for us.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. And anyone, if you need some accommodations as far as access to computers, certainly let me know and we can get something set up here at City Hall.
Well, you know, I'll still be here. There's no interruptions and I'm sure it's going to work.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Sorry for your luck, girls. Anyway, placement items for the next agenda, anybody? If not, I would ask Amy.
I'm getting a little adjourned.
We have a second. I, I heard that, Amy.
Okay.
Perfect. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, we are adjourned at 6:30, thank you, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Yes.